All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 23 Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and is being recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Doc is coming a little bit late today, and Stephanie is with us on Zoom. So if we could just do a quick sound check, Steph, can you hear us okay?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can. All right, great. And we have Mr. Dumas standing, so he can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic that sustains, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't think they heard you. All right, great. All right, so as I mentioned, in case you're just joining us, we do have Doc, who is joining us late but is not here just quite yet. And we have Stephanie, who's with us on Zoom this evening. So for our first item, we have citizens input. Is anyone here for citizens input? Hello. You guys distracted me as you all came in.
We're all here together.
Hi.
These are for you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Diana Griffin Chujo Frode. We just wanted to come up and thank you for your service. I'm gonna get teary-eyed. So Leah and I have been friends literally since kindergarten, which will tell you something about the town of Foxborough. And so we just wanted to say thank you. I know that you are a single working mom, a businesswoman, a leader, and you have devoted yourself to two terms. And you are leaving Foxborough better than you found it. And we want to thank you for that, for all of your time.
Thank you so much. That is so amazing, guys. Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's been an honor getting to know so many people that I knew before, like you, Diana, and so many people I didn't, you know, standing back there, like Amy and Tom and, you know, others. So that's been the best part of the job is really the people. So thank you very much.
So enjoy your last meeting. Hopefully.
All right.
Isn't that nice?
Yeah, that's nice. Thank you.
Do you know them?
No. All right, anyone else here for citizens input? No? All right. Then we'll go into the change of manager application for Big Night Ventures LLC. Scorpion Bar? All right, great. So if I can just have you come up to the table. If you can each tell us your name and then tell us a little bit about what you're doing here. And then we may have some questions, and then we just have a motion for it, okay?
My name is Kelsey Coulter. I'm here to put everything in my name for the change of management for Scorpion Bar.
My name is Frank Potrero. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Big Night, and I'm here with Kelsey as we go through.
All right, great. So if you could just tell us a little bit about it, and tell us about like your background and any experience that you have, any training you have, you know, tip certification, just kind of give you what we're looking for.
I've been a GM for over 10 years. Recently with Big Night, I've been a GM for three years. I am tip certified, crowd control certified, pretty much all certifications. And I plan on being here for a lot longer, so.
Kelsey's, you know, probably one of the best GMs we've ever worked with. She's been with Big Night for three years. Mike, who was our previous manager, has moved on, and we're leaving Kelsey in charge, and expect great things.
All right, great. Any questions from the board? Steph, especially you. Steph works in the industry, so sometimes she has some questions.
I think she summed up everything. I'm good.
All right, great. Anything?
Everything good.
All right, so usually I make the motions, but I can still do it. So motion to approve the change of manager application for Big Night Ventures LLC, doing business as Scorpion Bar and Mexican Cantina at 253 Patriot Place, from Michael Litzitsa?
Litzitsa.
Okay. To Kelsey Culler.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, well, welcome to Foxborough then. Oh, yeah, we have to roll call the vote, sorry. Go ahead.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes.
Seth, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
All right, great. So all set. And you have something for Katie? That's for Katie.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks so much. I can send everything to her. All right, we're a little ahead of schedule, but at 7:15, we have the Foxborough Affordable Housing Trust. We have two motions under there. And Paige, are you going to be speaking about this item?
I sure am.
All right, great.
So just for way of background, we have an affordable housing trust fund. It was originally funded back when the state hospital was being redeveloped. And at a time, there were supposed to be affordable units in there. And I think the 2008 recession hit, and it was a matter of trying to salvage the project. So the developer Doug King went with the planning board and worked with the town to come up with a plan to create an affordable housing trust fund in lieu of the affordable units. So basically, he bought down these units and put it in an account for the town. When I got here in 2015, it was sitting there. There was an affordable housing trust, but it wasn't doing anything. I've always joked that $320,000 is kind of too much to do nothing with, but too little to do anything with. So it was like, you know, you don't want to waste it.
I remember you saying that.
Yeah, so it was tough. But then fortunately, the Walnut Street project came along. And as part of Walnut Street, and I know you've probably heard me mention this, we retained mass development to do two phases of work to get that project off the ground. And the agreement is, is if you sell the property, the subject property, within a certain period of time after using mass development, you have to repay it. And there's various amounts, you know, 25%, 50%, whatnot. So we've already paid off our first debt for Phase 1. And now I'm proposing that with the balance of the fund, that we pay down the debt of, we owe $25,000, but we only have to pay, we only have to pay $12,500, sorry, because of the 50% discount. So we are seeking to, this Affordable Housing Trust Committee did meet on, what was it? April 2nd. Their first vote was to take the remaining balance and pay down the $12,500 for mass development. And then the second vote was whatever remaining balance is, which by my estimation is $70,000, will go towards Phase 2 of the Walnut Street project. So that would, if all that is expended, would bring most likely the balance down to zero. Although, I don't know if there's interest, so that's why I'm not saying. And under our regulations, it's required that even though the Affordable Housing Trust Committee voted it, now the Select Board needs to ratify it. So I'm seeking your approval to go ahead and commit the remainder of the funds to repayment and to Walnut Street.
All right, any questions on that? Pretty straightforward?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we have two motions on that one. So the first one is motion to approve, as Paige mentioned, a payment of $12,500 to Mass Development as a repayment for Phase 2 of the Walnut Affordable Housing Pre-Work.
Second.
All right, so roll call?
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes.
Seth, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
All right, great. And then the second piece, which Paige talked about, motion to approve $70,000 of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be committed to Phase 2 of the Walnut Street housing project.
Second.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes.
Seth, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
All right, great. All right, so moving on to item number four, we have the new street Eisenhower Lane Ridge Road subdivision, which we have in our packet. I don't remember seeing one of these before on New Roads, so.
No, you didn't. And I asked the same question.
Okay.
So the planning board, typically we work off of an approved street listing. And I think we're running low on listings. And so there wasn't a good one, and/or they wanted to honor this family. So because it's not on the official approved street list, it's outside of it, and you all are road commissioners, that is why it came to you. So just by way of background, I could present this. Well, I told Mr. Buckley that you didn't have to come in. There's been a request that the new roadway, constructed on Ridge Road, be named after Thomas Eisenhower. He, for 28 years, was the Foxborough Health Agent and the Plumbing Inspector. He moved to Foxborough in 1969, has a TJ Eisenhower Plumbing, and then he has three children. And now Michael is also now their Plumbing Inspector. And his grandson is also now a plumber and a Foxborough resident. So for those reasons, they're asking that this road be named Eisenhower Lane. And you have a plan, I believe.
Yep. Just wasn't sure why we're seeing this one and having the other.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. All right, any questions on this one?
Is it built?
No. It's under review right now. The planning board would approve it with that name.
Okay.
Oh, okay, that's why.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. It's a proposed subdivision.
And then it would still have to be an accepted road and go to town meeting and all that other stuff.
Correct.
That would come thereafter.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so motion to approve Eisenhower Lane in the Ridge Road subdivision.
Second.
Did you have?
I've got something to say.
Okay, do you want to come up to the table?
Yes, ma'am.
And just tell us your name?
Yes, ma'am.
Please?
Yes, hi. Ladies, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Ma'am? My name is Neil Kaiser. I live on Levin Ridge Road here in Foxborough. I am also a veteran. And what I'm here today for is to make a request of the board. It is my understanding that you have the right to name a street. And I am tired of, I've been here a lifelong resident. I'm tired of seeing contractors name streets after family members and different things like that in the town of Foxborough. My total understanding is, as a board, all of you can change the name to whatever you want, and that's what it would be. I can understand, and I understand Mr. Eisenhower asking to do what he wants, and that's fine. I understand that totally. But again, there are many veterans that have given their life here in the town of Foxborough. They have a name with a plaque on the name of a corner somewhere in town. To me, that's not enough. I think of Coppin Street, Moore Street, and I'm sure there's a bunch of others. If I took some time to look them up, I could find them, that are named after veterans that gave their lives. So I'm asking you, I'm begging you, to think about those veterans that do not have a street name after them. This has been a long-going issue. And the selectmen used to do that. They used to name the streets after a veteran. And it hasn't happened in a long time. And I really hope that you can do that. Maybe look in your bylaws. I don't know if it's written, I don't know. But my understanding is that is your right, and to me, your obligation, especially as being a veteran. So I would appreciate it very much. I can give you the names. Gerald Metcalf, Arthur Brown. Gerald Kingsman, MIA, still. Joseph Cook, Mark Goodsbie, Robert Curry, Terry Baldwin, William Gross. These are guys that I went to school with. Excuse me. It bothers me immensely that they're not being recognized. And there are still a number of people from World War II, I'm sure, from other wars, that have not been recognized other than a street sign on a corner that needs to change. And you can do it. So I hope that you will look at these, any new street in town. I don't care what it is. And to me, it doesn't have to be at the corner of wherever their plaque is. A street in the town of Foxborough where they lived. And I hope it makes an impression on you. I don't know, but I just had to come today when I saw that that was on the agenda and to make that request. And it's something that needs to change drastically. Any veteran that gave their life needs a street in this town named after them. So please, take that under consideration and make that change if you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great to consider, especially Paige. You'd said, are they running low?
Yes, I think, listening to this, Mr. Kaiser, I think you have a great idea, and probably something that's been done in the past. But it sounds like, and if you'd be willing to help out, we can work with our new Veteran Service Officer to come up with a new list. I just mentioned that we're running out of street names, so we can develop a new list.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'm in the book.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like it's the perfect time.
Usually we also work with historical.
I'll bet and give you whatever number you want.
Okay. All right, we'll work on that.
Anytime.
Great idea. I love it.
Thank you.
Great idea, thank you. And it does bring another question. So is the naming of this, you know, I don't know who FED cap is. Is that the Eisenhower family asking to name a road after themselves, which I think Mr. Eisenhower has done a ton of work for the town? But you bring up a point. Is that what we're saying, that they're looking to name it after themselves? Do we know who the client is?
I don't know. For some reason, anecdotally, I believe this might be an Eisenhower project, but I'm not involved in the planning board as much, so I'm not 100% sure. But if for some reason I recollect that it might be.
Are you talking about the project on the street?
Yes.
That's totally Eisenhower.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
So is there any concerns about that? Or, I mean.
I mean, like Mr. Kaiser said, it's kind of common. You know, you end up with people, Tiffany Lane, or, you know, the daughter's name or whatnot. So no, the only thing I'm checking on right now is to make sure that public safety would be okay with it.
Yeah, because I know that came up with the whole Burrows Barrows. Like, we already had a Burrows, and then we had a Barrows named, and there was a lot of confusion around that. And I think public safety had some concerns, but that had already kind of left the dock.
Yep, yep.
So do we want to table this one, then? While you check with public safety?
Sure. Yep, I don't think they'll hold it up.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know for sure, but.
But I do think that we should absolutely work to get the veterans' names on there for the list to be picked from, for sure. Okay, so we had a motion. The board, do you, anyone feel passionately about moving forward with this? Or because there isn't a timeframe, we want to just check with public safety, make sure they're okay with it, and what happens with Burrows and Barrows? Doesn't happen again?
Yeah, it's hold.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I don't foresee any issues with it, understanding, you know, obviously what you're saying for the next one. But let's just check in with public safety and table that one for now. All right, the next one is boards and committee review. So this is an annual process that we go through for everyone who's appointed to a board and committee. And it is an immense amount of work that Katie has been doing, and it's really a lot of work to, you know, go through who's on each board and committee. Were they sworn in? Did they take their oath? Do they want to be reappointed again? So we don't want to just roll over people's appointments. We appreciate everyone's, you know, volunteerism, but we don't want to just reappoint someone without them acknowledging that they'd like to stay on the board. So Katie, if you can give us kind of an overview of the number that are out there, the next steps, the letters, kind of all those steps, and then what will happen in May?
Sure. So today, I sent out 128 reappointments, which is actually just 100 people. So you can kind of just see how many people are on a couple different boards. So it was a letter that was worked on internally. We, you know, ran it by Leah. She had some good suggestions as well. So basically, we're giving everyone till May 1st to let us know if they, or me, know if they want to be reappointed, and also if they are a resident of town or if they are on this board by statute, which an example would be like the liquor control agents. Those are appointed by Chief Grace, so they don't necessarily have to be residents of town. So we're going to collect these. I actually probably already have 15 of them, which I thought was pretty surprising, just because I sent it this afternoon. So that was great. We next will then, by the 8th of May, we will be advertising on our social media, our website, just the open seats. So that would be seats that are currently open and seats that maybe those people never got back to me. I'm going to do my best to reach out as many times as possible. But if people could be forthcoming, that would be appreciated. And then we will wait probably the next two weeks, three weeks, until the next meeting, or the May 21st meeting for the Select Board, which the reappointments and any new appointments will be done at that time. So following that meeting, through our access database, we'll be able to send out, we revised our elected and appointed letter, which will go over all of ethics training, you know, impressing that the importance of being sworn in. We will collect all those. Hopefully, everyone will be sworn in in a timely manner. And then we also updated, these are all in your board docs, but we also updated our request for committee appointment letter, which just has like an extra one or two questions. And it does go over, you know, if that person does submit their request, we are going to send that to not only the chair, but the entire committee. If there are multiple, that committee will have to go through interview process to then nominate one or two, however many seats are available, to this board, which will then confirm the appointment from there. So we wanted to just make sure it was clear as day of our process and timeline. So yeah, it's been a lot of work, but hopefully it's on the right track.
Yeah. These boards and committees are obviously really important jobs. They make some really important decisions. So we're just making sure that everyone, you know, understands what their role is, that they're sworn in, that they understand, you know, whether it's a one-year, two-year, three-year appointment. And then just making sure that we have our arms around kind of all of them, because there are, like Katie had said, over 100 of them. So it can get a little confusing. And it gives us a better visibility, too. Like, before, we were only seeing the applications that came to us to be approved. But if there's more than one person, the Select Board will now have the visibility, you know, to see if there are multiple people interested in one seat, so that they have a full picture, you know, instead of just seeing who the board puts forward to be appointed. So, and it will give our residents an opportunity. It will give us a better understanding of what open seats that we have, so we can advertise those and get some new people if they choose to step away involved as well. So if you are on a board or committee and you're up May 1st, May 31st, just keep an eye out for that letter and return it. Stephanie, you have a question?
Yeah, well, and also too, I know we haven't had many issues, but I think when some issues have come up as far as social media, we've been told that there's nothing we can do. And I think we've had this discussion once before, a couple of years ago, that the only action the board could do is to not reappoint somebody to a certain board or committee. And so I think, you know, I'm not going to get into it, but I think there was a complaint made about somebody. This isn't the time to talk about it when we get to that point. And I just do want to make sure that we are able to have discussion to, if somebody is just not playing with the rules and they're skirting by because we don't have any other way to deal with it other than to not reappoint, I just want to make sure we have, you know, and give a fair opportunity for that person to speak about it, and then we can take action, because that's the only action we have. Like I said, I'm not going to get into it. I think a complaint may have come to Doc and maybe some other board members. Somebody made a complaint to me, like I said, not the place tonight. But just to make it known that if that's the only action we have to get somebody to play by the rules we would like them to play by, that that's the only other way we can get them is to not reappoint. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and we don't want to just be kind of rubber-stamping them. Like, we really appreciate all the volunteers, but I think there's some that may not even know they're up for reappointment without this letter, and they may just kind of get rolled over. And it's really giving them the opportunity to, you know, have to acknowledge, yes, I want to stay on, or no, I'm looking to kind of pass the torch, without us just kind of assuming that everyone just rolls over.
Yeah. I'm not sure if anybody else got a complaint. Like I said, tonight's not the time or place to discuss it. But, you know, just making a note is, that's why it's very important for us to have that opportunity to okay someone to stay on or not stay on.
I think Stephanie and Dennis both have something.
No, Doc is very much aware of this complaint, and we all got a copy. So it is going to be on a future agenda to really discuss that particular issue.
Okay, so I didn't get a copy.
Well, I don't know what that one's going to be. So I wouldn't speak for Doc without him being here, because I don't know that those people are up for appointments. So this is, we're talking tonight about just all general appointments.
Right, right.
I don't know exactly what Steph's talking about, but I, you know.
I think that's what she's talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Well, you know something? And, you know, I didn't get a copy, unfortunately. I'm not able to get into my outlook. For some reason, it's saying that I'm somewhere that isn't accepting. So Katie's been nice enough to send some of the stuff. So I didn't, I was verbally told about it. So I haven't seen a copy of anything. But like I said, I probably talked too much about it tonight. I just want people to know that's really some importance of us being able to look at reappointments, you know. And I'm not saying we ever rubber-stamped them, but, so anyhow, just a comment, that's all.
Yeah, I need to send her.
Okay, so because this is not an agenda item, I will refrain from commenting on any of Steph's comments. I would expect that we would have an agenda item in an upcoming meeting to talk about oversight. So part of, explicitly in the town code, is a section around the Select Board. Unless otherwise noted in the town code or in state law, the Select Board is responsible for administrative oversight of boards and committees that are appointed by the Select Board. So I have some ideas about what that oversight could look like, and I'll wait for the appropriate time and when we have a meeting to inhabit on an agenda item. So I think there's things we can do. So we'll talk about it when that time comes, but.
Yeah, and I've had similar conversations with, you know, Paige and Maura, too, that with Maura joining as the Community Information Specialist, I think every board and committee should have like a liaison in Town Hall who's making sure, you know, do you understand how you post your agendas? Do you understand that you should reorganize every May, even if you don't? Making sure, you know, everyone's meeting minutes and agendas are with Bob Cutler, but can a resident go out and self-service them on the web and be able to see them? And really handling all these boards and committees kind of the same instead of the way that it's done now. So there is a lot of work to do, and I think that piece is exactly where I've been going as part of the communication plan and have, you know, kicked off some of those discussions as well.
And by the way, Leah, let me just say a big thank you to you because you have taken that under your wing. And I hope we can finish up your vision, because now that you won't be continuing. But I know you've done a lot of work about the boards and committees. So I want to publicly thank you for everything you've put into it for our board.
Yeah, thank you. It's an important job that people have, and they put in a lot of time, too. And I want to make sure that they have the support, you know, to run their board and committee, you know, the way they need to. Municipal law is very complicated. We want to make sure that we're helping and guiding and doing everything we can to not only support them, but then get people to step up, too, when there's empty seats and not just kind of, you know, rolling things over if we don't hear from people. So, all right, so with that, there is a long list for the board to look at so that you have an idea of everyone that's coming up. And this is also in the town report. So, you know, the report that we're looking at, the town report's in the back, too. It's online. You can kind of see every board and committee that's up and the May 31st appointment for 2024 as well. and the, um, mark, the, the May 31st appointment, um, for 2024 as well, so it's in here for the board to review. And then, next meeting, we'll, we'll understand where the open seats are, get those advertised, and then hopefully make all the appointments at that second May meeting before the expiration on May 31st. And then just while we have, you know, everyone listening, it's important for everyone to come in and get sworn in. There's, there was a lot of people, you know, there was people that had never come in to get sworn in, or as their term rolls over, you have to do that as well, so just making sure that we're keeping ourselves in compliance and crossing all of our Ts and dotting our Is. All right, great. Um, any other comments on that one, before we move on to town manager's update?
Okay, you ready for me?
We're ready.
Okay, so, um, this afternoon, uh, we did our warrant review meeting on Foxborough Cable Access, so I was here in the, um, room. I thought it was going to be really long, and it was only, it was under an hour, so 30 articles, pretty good. If we could do well on town meeting, we'll see, but I doubt it. Um, so, um, just, so everybody knows, May 6th is the election, um, and that's a week from Monday, and then, um, the town meeting is May 13th. We've been sticking with May 13th, although we all kind of think it'll fall to May 14th. Um, it's been important to, to impress on folks that we do have, oftentimes, we look at, even though they're linked, we look at the election as one act, and then the town meeting as a second. In this case, um, you can really see how they're linked, because on May 6th, there'll be, um, three ballot questions on the, on the ballots, and, for residents to vote on, and that's just step one, and then I have a graphic up here for the debt exclusion. I just want to make sure people understand that this is not an override. A debt exclusion is a temporary increase in taxes to pay for a capital project that then falls back off. Um, so the first step is that annual election, May 6th, and, um, there will be one question I have gotten, because people have seen the warrant and the ballot, and there, there hasn't been money on there, and that's intentional. That's, uh, the way it's, it's legally done, is the ballot will not have the money and the warrant, but the motion will. So the town meeting will be voting an amount, they will be appropriating an amount, but it's just the customary, legally, the way to do it is the way we've done it. We've followed all legal counsel. And then on, um, May 13th, with a possible second night, there'll be the vote on each ballot question, in addition to 27 other articles. Um, so the, the vote at the ballot is in a majority vote, and then the vote at the town meeting is a two-thirds majority. And one of the key things I wanted to point out, and I, I meant, I ma- made that point today, is that these three questions are not tied to one another. So we're, while we're busy talking about them, as if, you know, oh, over, debt exclusion, debt exclusion, project, whatever, they are three distinct projects. So the town can absolutely vote to approve one, two, three of them, none of them. So it's really, but the key is, is that in order to get a yes, you need a, a yes on May 6th, and then at town meeting. So that's where those two tie in, but each question is separately dealt with through the two processes. Mr. Beck, do I have another slide? Yeah, there we go. And this is what everybody really wants to know, is what is the estimated per household income, uh, increase? Um, so the amounts, DPW expansion would be 16 million, community center is 3.2, and the police locker room is 750. Believe it or not, an average single-family home in Foxborough right now is 608,000,662, so we provided the amount up there, that, you know, for the DPW, it would be an extra 163, um, point 72, and that's per year, just so you know, these numbers are per year. And then if folks, you know, don't have a house that's worth exactly 608, you can do the math yourself and see the column in the middle, which is the per 1,000. So you'd take your house value, which you can find on the assessor's database, divide it by 1,000, and then multiply it, um, I mean, sorry, yeah, and then, uh, multiply it by the rate and add that. So we, basically, you can calculate it yourself. Um, I think I have one more slide, Mr. Beck. So, and this is just to sort of rehash it, just to make it clear, that they are not linked to each other, you can approve one, none, or all, um, and we just want to make sure that's very clear to everybody. We have, um, created on the front page of the website, Maura's been working really hard, um, to create a residence guide, she's put as much information up there as she can, we have videos of two of the three projects, we are waiting for the community center video. I can't say enough about Foxborough Cable Access and how much work they've put in, um, to do these videos for us, to work with us. They're even adding, um, I had them take the public hearing on the MBTA community, splice that out on its own, and put it on the website. So we're really trying to get as much information out there as we can before town meeting, because as we discussed, it's 30 articles. So we really don't want people, if we can help it, seeing this for the first time on the night of the town meeting. It will make for a long couple nights. Um, so we just, like I said, we had the warrant review, that will be running on Foxborough Cable Access, people can look for that. We do have an open house here in the gala meeting room on May 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00, and that's just, um, that's not going to be a presentation, that's just, um, sort of a drop-in, open-house situation. So if anybody has any specific questions, we'll have subject matter experts here, so we could just chat, and, you know, if there are questions or whatnot, we'll be available to answer questions. Um, and then, just to be clear, the advisory committee recommendations are already up on the website, so you can find those to see what they're recommending. Um, another question we received is, you did, um, all the households got these postcards about MBTA communities, caused quite an uproar. It was me, I apologize.
The town seal was on them after the uproar, when I got it, I realized, the town seal's on them.
I know, I, town seal was on them, and now I've learned a little lesson, we'll do a little better job of saying, you know, it was, um, sent out by us, it was paid for by a, a state grant, um, and it's basically so that I can tell, um, you know, the, the state, you know, that, listen, we did X, Y, and Z to try to comply with the law, so that's why we wanted to make sure all residents were avail, were aware that this issue's coming up, and there's plenty of material on the web to be looking at. Um, so that's where you get the postcard. And then lastly, around town is the Walnut Street project. Um, we've got a lot of questions about the clearing that's gone up by 95, you can see they're moving fast. That is the Housing Authority's 200 all-affordable senior apartments, it's going to come with a traffic light, actually two, um, so they're moving quickly, as you could see, it's very, uh, very exciting. Um, another order of business for this board, and I guess I would ask a question of you. Um, as you recall, Pat Costello's retiring, and June 30th is his last day. Um, we did go out and put out a request for, uh, qualifications, and we got three proposals back, so we have three applicants for that. Um, is that something, we have two ideas, we thought maybe bring it, since it's only three, we thought it might be a good idea to do an interview with all three, and then it's two ideas, whether you want to do it at a select board meeting, or whether we want to have a special meeting one night, just bang them out and interview them all at once. Thoughts, or whether you want to have one member handle, I mean, how do you want to handle it? It's a board decision.
I won't be here, but, but I think it's really important for the board to interview. I think personality and that piece, like, it's all table stakes, I'm sure they're all qualified, they're all licensed pricing, I don't know if it's similar, but, you know, I think it's a really, really important role in the town, and I think it is something that they should probably come in, and, you know, even if it's not an interview, even if we just kind of meet everyone, um, but that's, that's just my.
I was leaning towards that, I'd like to kind of see the people, and I would, I would recommend we probably try to do it on one night, because it's, it's too much for a board.
I agree, and with the next couple of meetings potentially being kind of busy, yeah, um, I think we should have a special night.
So I think what we'll have to do is we'll have to wait to see what happens May 6th, see who's on the board, and then, you know, we'd luckily have a meeting the next night, we'll bring it up again, and set a ti- try to find a time. I do think we should do it sooner rather than later, we don't want to wait till June 30th, obviously, so we want to get this taken care of, as, you know, as early in May as we can, so that we have some certainty, and perhaps we could have some transition even, where, you know, and Pat has offered to help, but it would be nice to have maybe a little overlap. Um, so, so that's what we'll do.
That would be ideal. Did everyone come in with, with the rates kind of the same? Were there any real outliers that, that would maybe be, okay.
Although I should say, I have not exhaustively, like, I did a quick skim, I haven't had a time to look at them hardly yet, I've flipped through them. I've started calling rec, uh, you know, other town managers that have used them, I'm starting to check references, but honestly, this week is just not the week for this, so I will, I will have to look at it a little more closely. So then I'll, I'll stay tuned whether there's any outliers.
Okay.
Our new veteran services officer, Michelle Hamilton, started yesterday, so we're going to have her probably come to the next meeting for an introduction. Um, we do still have some current open positions, the Assistant Treasurer Collector, I know they just did an interview now, Director of Land Use and Economic Development. We have a new one, it's Community Health Nurse, and this one is actually a shared position, it's a Community Health Nurse position, is a grant-funded position, working on behalf of the towns of Easton, Foxborough, Mansfield, Norton, Plainville, and Sharon, and it's based on the availability of public excellence grant funds and provided through the Department of Public Health. So Matt Brennan is working on that with Paige at Polito right now. And as always, we have a water tech position open. Um, lastly, communications, like I just said, um, Maura's been really working hard on the, um, updates on the website for the election and the town meeting. She's also been starting, doing a lot of training and working on the website itself, and she has confirmed that it's tough. So we're, you know, it's going to be a, it's, it's, it's a tough project, because the, the platform isn't necessarily the best. So we'll, we're working on it, and we'll see how it goes, but there are, I'm learning now that it doesn't matter who it is, it's still a problem, so it starts to wonder if it's the platform, as opposed to, you know, it's like, it's, it's not a person, it's a, it's a problem. So we'll get to that. In the meantime, we're going to make it the best we can and get as much information out there, but we are limited based on the, the abilities of that website.
If I could just give a shout-out to you and, and Maura in particular, um, on the website, there's everything you, you would want to know about the upcoming town meeting, the questions, the MBTA communities, uh, all of that information is there. I've watched a couple of videos, they're excellent, I'm looking forward to the other ones when they become available. So, you know, in my experience, it's more information, whether it's written information, meetings, personal meetings and reviews, or written material that's on the website, it's, everything is there for the, for the residents to really understand exactly what's happening, uh, at the town meeting, why things are happening, you know, what the questions are all about. They're clear, they're concise, it was, it's just very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, no matter how you want to self-serve the information, whether you want to self-serve, you want to come in here on May 1st and sit down and have a conversation, you know, if you want to watch a little snippet, I know I watched some of them, and I found, I, even as much as we've heard about the locker room, it was great to see the locker room and hear from the staff and all that, so, you know, really great job at getting everything together. And, you know, I would say to residents, if there's more ideas or more ways, send them on to Maura, she's, um, you know, she's definitely willing to hear them and, and see what we can do. So I think that there's been a lot of information. I mean, there's a lot to take in, but then there's a lot of information for, um, for residents and taxpayers as well, leading up to this.
That's our goal, is to try to make this, you know, easy to access and multiple ways, and, you know, we live and breathe this. It's actually been fascinating with Maura, because, you know, as you know, Maura's relatively new, and she didn't come from local government. So it's been fascinating to watch her learn all this as she creates this, and it's actually been great, because she's coming at it as a layperson, and it's been really helpful, and by watching her learn and understand, it's been fascinating, and she brings sort of a fresh perspective to the table, which I'm really appreciating, so, thank you.
Paige, can I ask a question? Um, not right now, obviously, uh, maybe later on tonight. Can you send me the, the two slides that, um, that were just up to see information with the numbers?
Yes.
And, um, how many, are they all the same amount of years for the debt? Are they, so are they going to be rolled into one big one, which I think that's what we were told? And how many, how many years is that going to be?
20 years, 20 years is what the current proposal would be.
Yep, okay.
And if they're approved, they are lumped together in one bond?
Yeah, one borrowing, yes.
Yep.
But yes, Steph, I will send that to you.
Awesome, thanks.
Giving the baton back over to you. All right, anything else for town manager's update?
No, I don't think so.
All right, so we're going to move on to select board update, so you want to, you want me to finish, or you?
Yep, I'll finish.
All right, so, um, select board update under new business, we have Foxborough Cleanup Day is May 11th, and I did see something go out on social media, there's a website, you can go up to sign up, they need to get, like, your t-shirts eyes, and find out if you're with a group and all that, same, same deal as usual. Um, so thank you to that. We have some letters of support for 76 Main Street that I'm going to read into the record, and then I'll do that after this. Um, and they are from the Council on Aging and Human Services Board, the Friends of Foxborough Seniors, the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, and then Paige, you already talked about the MBTA Communities, um, postcard. And the only thing that I thought of after the agenda went out is the Miami Messi game is this weekend, so just putting that on everyone's radar, that is one of the biggest MLS records sold-out soccer games, um, so there will probably be some traffic in town, if we're used to it. But I know that snuck up on me, that that's coming on, was it April 27th, I think, I think it's?
Whatever Saturday is.
Yeah, Saturday, so just reminding everyone that that's coming up as well. All right, so with that, just bear with me as I read through these letters of support for 76 Main Street, which just to remind everyone, is the town's new multi-generational community center. And I think Mr. Beck has them to pull up, so if people want to follow along online, in the audience or at home, I'll just read whichever one you pull up first. All right, great, so we have the Board of Recreation. So the Foxborough Board of Recreation makes a motion to publicly support the town of Foxborough's purchase of the Church of Latter-day Saints property located at 76 Main Street, Foxborough, Mass., for use as the town's multi-generational community center. The Foxborough Recreation Board recognizes the benefit of a multi-generational community center, which will house the offices of Recreation, Veteran Services, and the Council on Aging, enhancing the well-being and quality of life for the town of Foxborough and its residents. The Foxborough Board of Recreation, the Foxborough Board of Recreation Board hereby expresses its full support for the purchase of 76 Main Street, Foxborough, Mass., and its development as the town's Foxborough Multi-Generational Community Center. The Foxborough Board of Recreation requests that the Foxborough Board, Select Board, acknowledge and consider this endorsement and their deliberations regarding the town's pursuit of a multi-generational community center. All right, so that's the first one. We should have three more, I think, Mr. Beck? All right, so next, we're going to the Council on Aging and Human Services Advisory Board. And this is a letter from Elaine Repoff, who is the chairperson of said board. So, at the COA slash HS Advisory Board meeting on March 28th, 2024, a motion was made and unanimously approved to publicly acknowledge the board's full support of the purchase of the building at 76 Main Street for the purpose of developing a community center. If successful, this community center that will house the human services, in parentheses, the Council on Aging, Human Services, Veterans, and Recreation, will serve every demographic in Foxborough. Our board not only recognizes the longstanding need for this larger, more accommodating space, but also the added benefit of helping improve the quality of life for all of our residents through existing and potential expansion of education, health, and multi-generational programs, social activities, and services that will be provided to our veterans and residents in need. Our board respectfully requests that the Select Board consider this endorsement during all future deliberations pertaining to the purchase and development of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints located at 76 Main Street, Foxborough, Mass., as the future community center for the town of Foxborough. Please accept our board's sincere gratitude and appreciation to all of you on the Select Board for quickly recognizing this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and taking the action necessary to what will hopefully be a successful outcome of providing a community center for all to enjoy. All right, next up, we have the Veterans Services Advisory Committee, and the letters from B. Malouf, who's the chairperson of that committee. Um, I'm writing on behalf of the Veterans Services Advisory Committee to express the committee's support for the proposed new multi-generational community center. The V SAC believes this community center will better serve community members, as well as all veterans of all generations, from World War II to current operations around the world. As you may know, veterans often face unique challenges upon returning to civil, civilian life, ranging from healthcare needs to employment and to reintegration to social slash community life. Having a central hub that provides essential services, support, and resources tailored to veterans will undoubtedly make a meaningful impact. Our committee firmly believes that the potential community center will play a vital role in promoting health, wellness, and inclusivity among veterans in the broader community. This is more important in a state like Massachusetts that does not have access to an active military base that provides returning veterans, active reserve, and National Guard much-needed healthcare and benefits information. The Veterans Services Advisory Committee met on April 18th, 2024, and voted seven to zero in support of the purchase and use of 76 Main Street, Foxborough, Mass., as a multi-generational community center. All right, great, and we have one more. And then we have a letter from Mr. Duma, who's here in the audience with us, president of Friends of Foxborough Seniors. Um, so on behalf of the Friends of Foxborough Seniors, thank you for your wisdom and action in seeking and receiving the successful bid for 76 Main Street for the future use as a community center to serve as a multi-generational asset for all the town's demographic groups. The enhanced physical space and parking will be significant improvement, not only for the Council on Aging and Human Services, but also for the, both the Department of Veteran Services and the Department of Recreation. In the history of all previous new buildings and renovations projects for this town, the financial cost for this project will be the best-ever bargain for taxpayers and all citizens. All right, so thank you very much for your letters of support, and the most important thing to anyone who supports or is concerned about the project, make sure you not only get out and vote on May 6th, but come to town meeting, um, to vote in person on that as well, and that does require a two-third vote, not just a majority as well.
Two-step process.
Two-step process, and just to mention, the plan right now is to sell the old community center, too, on that one, so, um, will help, will help with the costs even more. All right, any other old business, new business, yes?
Yeah, I just had a, a note, I think, of new business, and this is something I've mentioned to, to Paige, so it's, it's not a surprise, but I've had members of the community reach out to me regarding conservation land, um, and specifically, there's an area of conservation land down on, you go down Main Street, take a left on Lakeview, or a right on Lakeview, I guess, if you're coming south, but anyway, it's on Lakeview. Um, there's some trails, and there's some signage there around, uh, partway down on the right, um, and there's, there's some level of disrepair, I think the sign is broken, the path is, um, impassable, um, and just in conversations, um, that I've had with some folks, there's limited resources to, um, uh, provide, you know, the, the necessary upkeep and maintenance to that, and so I just wanted to bring that out and, um, put a little attention on that issue, um, that we're, we're thinking about, um, opportunities to, um, to the extent we can maintain, um, the conservation lands, um, fix the sign, that type of thing, so, um, I would suggest that if, if people in the community had ideas or thoughts, um, they could reach out to me, and we could, we could have a discussion around what, uh, what the opportunities or challenges are, so, um, just wanted to put that out there. Um, more to, more to come, but, um, work in progress. Thanks.
If I, if I may, through the acting chair.
You are, yeah.
You know, one of the things that, that came up is a lot of these projects are done by, um, uh, the Eagle Scout projects.
Yep.
And, uh, going forward, I think Paige, you looked into the fact that there's not an Eagle Scout in view for quite a few years, so, I mean, that's why it's even more important that, uh, um, you know, we look into alternative means to, uh, to possibly fund it, and we've already talked about that a little bit, uh, which I think we're going to bring forward in, hopefully, the next couple of months.
And that actually reminds me, I do have one more thing, too. I went to the, um, Cultural Council meeting last night, so I've been working with them in collaboration with the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative about some possible murals or art, you know, either on, in the center of town, or around town, wherever that may be, and the first mural will be kicked off down at the Recreation Center on the baseball trailer that's kind of over by the volleyball nets, and, um, the batting cage is over there, so, um, I will probably stay connected. So I will probably stay connected with that one through the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, but it could be good just for that board to be on one of the select persons' agenda, too. I don't think, no one needs to be like appointed to that ex-official or anything, but they do have some budget requests coming up next year that I've talked to Paige about that will help them be more successful with the state. So that is that is kind of one role that's not an official one, that would be good, you know, it's it's at the library, it's really close for you, Seth, or you know, whatever. You know, their meetings, it's a great group, so just want to mention that. And the excitement about, you know, that that mural on the trailer that they're doing, kind of coming off the back of some of the the foxes as well.
It's funny when you were talking about.
I have one thing I wanted to add to Cleanup Foxborough Day. Just in case somebody hasn't participated in this before.
Oh, sorry, Steph.
Oh, yep. So I just want to add one thing to Cleanup Foxborough Day. If someone hasn't, this is a great event, first of all, and thank you to AJ and his whole crew. So just to let people know, I mean, there's groups that will go uptown or walk up by the schools, but, you know, I live in a homeowners' association, so our development, if you have your a neighborhood that you want to clean up your neighborhood, we we've done before where we've got people, and if you let AJ know, I don't want to speak for him, but I'm sure he would still do this, if you let him know, he will send one of the guys to your neighborhood and actually, you know, he has a radar on where and to pick up bags. So if you want to work on your neighborhood or a certain area, I'm sure, you know, you get in touch with him, and he'll he'll make he'll make that happen for you. So I just wanted to add that to his very successful event.
And if I'm not misremembering, I believe, I looked at it real quick, the signup, I think that there is a section to write if you're with a group and if there's a certain area that you're going to on that page.
Yeah.
And then Doc was just talking about the murals. Did you have any?
Yeah, no, no, just that it sounded familiar because I was at that meeting. Very excited about that program coming up.
The rec board approved it, and I don't want to give too much before it rolls out, but the artist that actually submitted an application to is a local person who's from Foxborough. The design was kind of unanimously, everyone was really excited about it. So so it's a little drip that hopefully will be done if the weather cooperates for Founder's Day is the plan. It's got a nice little picture backdrop, you can take a picture there, so more to come on that, but it's it's exciting. And then hopefully we can get some uptown or, you know, wherever it may be, you know, even around town. I'm not saying it has to just be uptown, but I think everyone's excited about maybe some more public art like we've seen in the foxes.
There's a weird blue wall at the booth playground. I wonder if that looks like a canvas kind of, I'm not even sure why that's there. It's by the pond.
Is it near the like snack shack? Oh, by the pond.
No, the other side. I thought that was a like a tennis bounce-back thing, no?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking for ideas from places from murals and.
Just a wall sitting in the middle of the hall.
And private owners of businesses, too. You know, there's been talks, what, even if you don't want it right on the wall, maybe it goes on like a big piece of plywood that goes up, but anyone that's interested in that. And we've been working that through Foxborough Common Business Collaborative as well. All right, moving on. You still want me to keep going?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so parking review. So we have two pieces that we've talked about before that we're looking to bring back. The first is the commercial parking spot fee and license, the renewals for July 1st, 2024. So we talked about it. There was some questions. I think we never want to raise a fee without the rationale, but this fee has not gone up in a long time, I want to say 15 years, am I misremembering? It's been it's been a long.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
It's been a long time, so a lot of work has been done to evaluate what is the right amount, rather than us just coming up with something anecdotally. So work has gone into that. Paige, are you going to speak about some of that work that's been done?
Sure, I can.
We're both taxing.
Okay, you're taxing it, okay.
Yeah, it's really Doc's.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, do we have, is Marie on the?
She was going to be on Zoom. Paul, do we have Marie on Zoom?
He could be.
Okay.
Yep, there she is.
Oh. Hi, Marie. So after we discussed this, you know, Seth brought up a good point, and that's, you know, documenting why the potential need, which is why we tabled it, we did a little bit of research. I think in our board packets, did Marie's, yep. So if I could go to you first, Marie, and talk about, you know, the little bit of the history and what's gone on over the last 15 years, and then I've got some other ideas and thoughts, too.
Did you guys get the the pricing strategy from Mr. Osman?
Yes.
Yes.
It's under.
Okay, so you got all that, okay. So if there's, so I mean, there are several ways to look at this. If you if you simply just take the $7 and adjust for inflation using the the Consumer Price Index, the same one that we use for the stadium ticket fees. So what that does is the $7 after an inflationary increase of about 43% comes out to $10.03. So based off of inflation alone, there's enough there to bump up that $7 to $10. Now, what, I actually had our assessor reach out to our tax attorney to find out how the city of Boston handles the parking lots around Fenway Park. And what Boston apparently does is they they apply what's called the income approach. So these lot owners around Fenway Park provide documentation to the city of Boston around the income that they receive from these lots. And there's this, I'm sure our assessor could speak better to this. Basically, what happens when you capitalize that income is it results in a much higher property value on these lots. So if you were to use the same income approach, our assessor did an example using the lot over on 105 Washington Street. And currently, that lot is valued at $2,322,100, and that results in a tax bill of $41,774. If you were to apply the same income approach that Boston does for the lots around there, it would, the value would go up significantly to $14,210,000, which would result in a tax bill of $255,638. So when you look at, you know, $10 versus an increase, in that example, it would be an increase of about $210,000 a year. That is one example. The strategy that Mr. Osman worked on for us, what he was sort of recommending was to do essentially like a tier pricing. So lots that are closer to the stadium would get charged a higher permit fee. So like, for example, like a premium location that's closer to the stadium could potentially be $20 per space. You could have a standard location at $15 per space, or an economy location for $11 per space. So there's that option there, but I think to simplify things, if you just simply just say, hey, we're going to adjust for inflation, going from the $7 to the $10 using this Consumer Price Index table that we use for the the ticket fees, I think there's enough justification there just for that $3 increase. And then I think that was all that I had to say there. Did you guys have any questions or any comments?
Any questions to Marie's spot before we move on?
Well, you're going to talk about the the police costs after, right?
Well, I I think we're more looking into the global cost of just in general doing business in the town of Foxborough, not necessarily just the police or fire or, you know, one of the things Seth brought up was, I believe, you know, what else has has have we restructured over the last couple of years? And a prime example is when we went over the building permit fees. Was it two years ago? Time flies.
It was just last year.
It might even been last year.
I think so.
And again, the building permit fees, when when Scott came in, he thought we were way undervalued compared to a lot of the communities around us. And a lot of, and 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 that's an easy example where you could just get the surrounding communities, find out what they were, like we do with with pay scales, and compare apples to apples. But for the most part, it's hard to compare what we do with licensing fees. There's really no one around here other than the great example Marie said about the Boston, what Boston does. There's really no other venue that we can compare it to other than Consumer Price Index being increasing over the last 12 to 15 years. But if you go down the list of building permit fees, you know, one of the things I heard was, you know, we're going up 43%. But if you go down the building permit fees, there are certain fees to bring them up to what the standard is in the surrounding communities. You know, some fees went up 175%, some went up 88%, some went up 275%. So, you know, that's just a reevaluation of where we're sitting right here, right here, right now. And, you know, I think it's time, it's due, and I think we have enough justification to do it.
And which one are you recommending? The flat 15 or the tiered?
I have a question.
Well, no, I'm suggesting the flat 10, the inflation 10. The flat 10.
Okay. You have Osman's recommendation as well.
Right, 15, and then the tiered, you know, maybe down the road, we could do something like that. But right now, I'm looking at, you know, right at my suggestion would be the 10. Why not the 11? Because I think the inflation was, was it 10.03?
Yes.
Huh?
Yeah, it was $10.03, exactly.
So that that's why.
Yeah, there's a lot of different figures out there.
There are, there are a lot of different figures, but that's, you know, we're sort of where.
We're looking at 10.
Yeah, I mean, but that's me. You guys think, you know, we're, you know, the Select Board.
I have a question. So so I watched the last meeting. I don't want to, I don't want to phrase it, I don't want to misspeak. Paige, did you bring up something about that fee is is supposed to be what the cost is to 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 issue the licenses? Did I did I hear that correctly?
I mentioned that fees are technically not supposed to be profit-driven, but what they are is supposed to cover costs. So but it's not directly like, you can look at it in a simplified version of, oh, well, how much time does it take Katie to do it? That's the very baseline. But it's really the whole, you know, the whole system, Katie, but also all that goes involved in in taking, dealing with those parking lots year-round, and, you know, all the permitting and whatnot that goes into it. So the memo on your board docs, I don't know if you have board docs, but the Osman Strategies provided kind of a good, it's called Foxborough Parking Permit Strategy, and that provided sort of good overview. We're not, we're not proposing to follow what he's doing, or you're not. I mean, I'm not proposing anything, but so, but that just kind of shows that there's more to it than just like Katie's time. It's really, you know, there's extensive costs.
Well, what, why I was confused with with, I read it all. What I was very confused at is he talks about paying for the police and the fire, which I I'm only, I can only talk for for the stadium, because I don't, I don't think anybody, anybody of the private lots are assessed anything about that. But the crafts already pay for that. They pay for when Scott Shippey's up there. So I was a little confused with his rationale. I'm not saying I'm not, I'm not about changing it at all, but like when I was reading his numbers, he talks about DPW, he talked about the building. And so I thought every event up there, the crafts are paying all the all the details, and we have both chiefs are getting hefty, very hefty stipends. So I, so that's why I was confused at Mr. Osman's overview. It looked like he was talking about things that are already paid for. So I didn't know why that would affect the permit. Now, am I correct or no? That's what I was confused about, his rationale.
That's his opinion, his rationale, but I don't think he had his finger on the pulse as as we do about some of the things that we already know are paid for.
And he actually recommended $15. He recommended even more.
Yeah. Yeah. I read, I read all his recommendations. I guess the only question I have is, do we, so based on what Paige said about not not being being that fee to be made for profit, is, can we, can we show that it costs more now? Not just using inflation. I mean, it seems to me like most of that is, you know, on Katie, because Katie's issuing all that. I mean, I just want to make sure we can show the increase. That that's all. I'm not agreeing with the increase or not, I just want to make sure we can show that increase, because as far as details and everything else, that's all paid for.
No, no, we get that. We get that, Steph. But but that's why we brought up as an example, the building commissioner. You know, the fees that he brings in for his department are are have been, number one, were increased significantly compared to where they where they used to be. But again, with all the fees that he he's brought in over the last year, it's it's due to the community, not just him go and and Dave Larissy going down to the stadium and making sure that all that building, you know, that new building at the in the end zone was done correctly.
Yeah.
Well, not only that, Doc.
I guess my point is, I'm okay with the the fees going up and them paying for that, but I am not putting that with the with a game day or an event park.
No, we got to get rid of that. Get rid of that thinking. Go ahead.
Yeah, but you have to justify it, you know, that's my point.
We're justifying that the fee hasn't gone up in 15 years, and the cost of doing business, the cost of inflation has.
Okay, and and just, I mean, well, actually, Lee would know and Dennis would know, he didn't charge any parking last year. So he made no money, and I know that's his choice. There was no cost to anybody for parking, and this year, Foxborough residents are not getting charged for parking. So I just want to make sure we're.
That's actually not true, though. That's just, that's just one side of the stadium, Steph.
And that's his choice. That has nothing to do with us. I just want to make sure we're only raising for what the real cost is. You can't talk about Scott Shippey going up there to, he's, they're paying that in a different way.
We know that, Steph. We got that. We got that. We we know that the police and fire are being paid different, we're talking about the community of Foxborough, the town.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
And not all the parking fees.
Yeah, just to clarify, my understanding of how it works is non-stadium-side parking, the craft organization has made a decision not to charge for those spots. However, stadium-side parking that's owned by the craft, my understanding is that does still come with a fee and a price tag. You can you can book that and you pay that ahead.
Yeah, that was last year.
It's not all spots, Steph.
It's different this year. I, yeah, I think, you know, just like the residents, whatever, that's probably just something, I mean, we're only talking 200 spots there. That's not a, not, not, I'm not trying to say because he gave the residence at all. I just want to make sure we're just talking about game, game day, or I shouldn't say game day, event parking. That's all. Like, because everything else I read there, you know, I just want to make sure what Paige said, we're not, this isn't to make money, this is to cover costs.
But Paige, Paige, you had an idea.
Okay.
Well, no, I was just trying to clarify that with your proposal, Doc, you'd basically be breaking even. You know, the $7 back in whatever, 15 years ago, is worth less than 10, you know, more, yeah, it's worth more than $10 now. So like basically, this proposal that Doc's talking about is actually breaking even. Right now, you've been losing money every year. And in fact, the regulations do say that you should revisit the fee every year, so that's something you're actually charged with doing to evaluate. And further, I think, yes, all the things are covered by the stadium, by the events, but we, you know, we have to maintain a certain size police and fire force because of what we have. We have to carry a special training, we have to carry special equipment. We have, I mean, there's just a lot of carrying costs with running this community and running, especially our public safety. I mean, I don't know that Fox, we need a lot, you know, we need more police and fire, we know that. I don't know if we'd need it as dramatically if we didn't have a stadium as we do, you know, I don't, I have not done the study. But obviously, the demands on our community for all things stadium are greater. And so I think what Osman was saying, he was going all in, saying, you know, you could justify even more money, which. justify even more money, which I don't think, Doc, you were proposing, but he's sort of saying there's a whole lot more to maintaining a police force than just, you know, your detail rates or your specialists, that. There is a whole different operation in Foxborough of public safety than there is, and even up here with all of us. I mean, the amount of time we all spend on these, you know, so it's.
It would be interesting, too, like if the parking lot operators, I don't know if they've gone up in the last 15 years, but just like their costs have gone up, you know, there's costs on this side as well. So I think, looking at what's in front of us, there's recommendations to go even higher, and we're not looking to make money, we're looking to just break even and, you know, really shame on us for not evaluating this every year and waiting 15 years. And hopefully, we're going to look at the building permits and, you know, all these fees annually so that there isn't as big of a jump, but right now, we have a little bit of, you know, catch up to do, just to get us to break even.
Can I just add something else? So typically, when you have a business in town, they provide income and expense reports to our assessor. And our assessor applying that income approach that I was talking about earlier, they essentially increase that business's value based on the income that they bring in from their operations. These lot owners do not provide those income statements. Now, if they did, like I said, if they did provide those statements, we would be taxing them. So maybe that's something to look at in the future, you know, whether you want to pursue something like that. Like I said earlier, that will result in, you know, property values skyrocketing. So I'm not sure if that's something you'd want to consider. But when, like I said with the example earlier of using 105 Washington Street, if you were to, if they were to report, you know, their net income from that parking lot, their tax bill will go from $41,000 to $255,000. So that's much more significant than an additional $3 per space.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, because, I mean, it's not just affecting them. I mean, obviously, they have the most spots, but it's, yeah, you know, everybody who's parking for an event up there. I just want to make sure we were complying with the not making money. That's, that's all. I wasn't, I wasn't yay or nay on the 10, but a lot of that information was, was, you know, for me, as I'm reading, and I mean, that, you know, we're, this is what we're using to help guide us. And for me, everything that Mr. Osman wrote really meant nothing because he talked about the police and fire and stuff. So I just, I wasn't part of the last meeting, and I just watched part of it, and I just, I just heard the part about making not profitable, just making sure that we're covering costs. That's really, I just want to make sure we're, we're just covering costs.
So with, with that, we hear it, we're not going with Osman's recommendation. I think we've taken it back, we've done what the board wanted to do, we've looked at it, we've made sure that we're not, you know, being exorbitant with these fees, we're, you know, playing a bit of catch up. So with that, do we want, are we ready for a motion? Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, so motion to amend the per spot fee, and it's an annual per spot fee for the commercial parking to $10 per spot for the renewals for July 1st, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, so we do have to do, did you have something, Mr. Stanton?
Well, it's not a public hearing, but you were inviting me up, I'll share my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a public hearing, do you, do you want to hear?
Come on up.
Yeah. Look, I'm going to work a couple of ads tonight. It's Mike Stanton of, you know, Route 1, Business Zone, a parking lot operator. I'm also chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission. And my advice to you is just put the brakes on this. We set rates every year. We hire a national, internationally recognized firm that this is all they do is set rates. They have many people in their office that are recognized by courts as expert witnesses in conflicts. And that's what you need. You need, you need to get a big firm in here, look at everything. Because I got to tell you, what I heard tonight, I'm not impressed. And you do not want to get into a position where there's an action taken, and neither do we. I mean, this is what we're faced with. When we set the water or sewer rates, we're ready to defend them in court anywhere. And it's probably the same standard you should be thinking about. Because the last thing you need is to have an action lose, and then, you know, you're in a position of retroactive reimbursement. So I won't even get into the, the fee and all the stuff now, I'm just saying, I think your approach would be best to just table it, interview some firms who do this professionally all the time, and protect the town. All right? So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Just to clarify, that would cost and then have to be incorporated into the permit fee.
Yeah, and I bet it would actually come up with something higher than Marie's talking about, like income statements and the taxes and the, I mean, I'd be, I would honestly be surprised if it came out lower than just looking at the cost of inflation.
Well, you know, we do, you know, talk to people, and, you know, and they say, well, jeez, you know, you're printing out maybe 100 pieces of paper a year, and, you know, you're collecting 215,000 plus. It does raise eyebrows. But you see, it's important that you protect yourselves and have more meat on the bone. And it's not just this, it's all the fees. You've really got to look at the whole thing comprehensively, set the groundwork so the town has something to work with going forward.
Maybe as a recommendation, too, televising those Water and Sewer Commission meetings would give us all some great visibility into that.
We advertise them, come on down every time.
We'd love to.
No one shows up. Thank you.
If it's televised, though, you know, maybe there'd be some more, so. Just, just a thought, just a thought. All right, so with that, we have the motion. Any further discussion? Yes.
I would just add that I'm totally in favor of Mr. Stanton's approach in terms of understanding the cost of covering the support for, for that service that the town provides. That said, with just covering the cost of inflation, or not even quite covering the cost of inflation over 16 years, I'm still comfortable with the $10 going forward. I do appreciate that approach where we're, we're really digging into what, what the cost is that we're incurring in covering that.
Could be more.
Could be more, of course, yeah.
And I think, I think as we make like our calendar of things going forward, I know, again, I won't be here, but like, there's, I feel like we should have a calendar of things we do here, is, you know, we do appointments every May, we do, you know, parking fees for Route 1 every, you know, whatever month makes sense, every April, we look at building permits every whatever, just if we have that framework to kind of keep us honest for some of these things we look at annually, I think it would just help keep us organized so time doesn't inadvertently slip.
No, I was just going to say, I've been a Patriots season ticket holder for over 20 years, and I've watched those parking rates, you know, whether it's, you know, the Patriots or the owned lots go up continually over that time period, and now they're like $50, $60 when they were like $20, $25. So going from $7 to $10, I think, is, is really just a small increase, frankly, from what I've experienced.
All right, so with that, we have a motion.
Let me just correct you, as a season ticket holder, when they built the new stadium, the fees were $40. That's, I only know that because that's if you wanted to, if you were a season ticket holder and you want to use the access road, it was $400 for the season, and now it's $50. So it, with the new stadium, I'm not talking about the old stadium, so we're talking 20-plus years, 21, 22 years, it's only been a $10 increase. The original state, the, the new stadium was built, it was $40, now it's $50. Just new stadium, I'm not talking about previous stadium.
Yeah, I'm talking about both, Stephanie.
Well, I'm just saying, in 21 years, it's raised $10. It was never, in 21 years, it was never $20 or $25. I, I'm not, I can't remember what the old one, I just know because I see it on my statement because I was a resident and I picked up the.
And Steph, that's just one lot, there's still the lot down at Seasonal or the lot, you know, on Pine Street. So there's, you know, probably a variety of places, I think is what Dennis is trying to illustrate.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, we've had a motion, we've had a discussion, this is a roll call vote, we have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, we seconded. So $10 is on the floor to go from 7 to 10.
Yes.
Leah, yes.
Mark, yes.
Seth, yes.
Wait a minute, you didn't, you didn't ask for any discussion?
Well, yes. Stephanie, the last 15 minutes has been discussion.
Well, the one thing, I just want to explain, I am going to vote no, not that, I'm not so much in favor of.
That's good. That's it.
No, no.
We've already discussed it.
Doc, once you make the motion, you ask if there's any other.
She did.
She did, that's when Mr. Stanton came up.
She did, that's when Mr. Stanton came up.
I didn't hear the motion in the second before. All I want to say is, because of what Mr. Stanton said, if action was to take, take place, I'm just going to say that's why I'm voting no, not voting no on the dollar amount. So, no.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so roll call, 4-1. All right, so we have a couple of action, oh, sorry, we have another, another parking lot, too.
One more parking lot.
One more parking lot, and that is the one at 1517 Market Street. I know I parked there recently for an Orpheum event, the neighbors were absolutely correct that it needs some love. It still looks a little bit like a construction site.
It still is, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we heard what they said about there being signs there for Station 1 specifically, so those were removed, they are, you know, anyone is free, is free to park there. And I like that we say no overnight parking because it gives us the ability to be able to do something to enforce in the event that it becomes an issue. So I think in keeping it with the Central Street Lot and some of the other lots.
Although, did you notice on this one, I actually added times?
Yes, I liked, I think that's fine, yeah.
I, we've had, yeah. I changed it to 6 to midnight.
6 to midnight.
How do you feel about that? Because, well, here's why, the midnight was because Shovel Town closes at 11:00.
Yeah.
So I was thinking 1:00 AM because of the bars, but then I'm like, oh, wait, they close at 11:00, so that gives them a little time, so it was like 12:00, and then I was like 5:59, totally arbitrary, so I'm open to it. I was just trying to think of like what normal wee hours of the night are versus what's morning.
Yeah.
So totally open to that, that was me just off the cuff coming up with something, and I changed my mind midstream.
I'm good with this, and if we have to revisit it on Central Street or this, after, you know, we had talked about revisiting Central Street after the Wall Street departments are up, so I'm good with this as a starting point. And then, do we have any kind of timeline, too, on them maybe beautifying that a little bit?
Yeah, I think it's coming along soon. I got a message, I've been messaging them, asking, you know, to clean it up, and they're very agreeable, but I think they finally, there's been a holdup with the electrical panel or something with the electrical service, and I think it's finally come in, and they're hoping, I want to say June, they're hoping to start renting, maybe sooner, I could check my message, but yeah. So I think we'll start to see it beautifying, and I, you know, I clarified, this will be cleaned up, right? And it will be, so it's not.
So no one's in those apartments yet?
No one's in those, no, not at all.
Is, is part of the street going to, is that a part of his mitigation, or is the town going to come in and you pay that?
The town's doing it, yes.
In, in the near future?
Very soon, this spring, this spring, summer, yes.
Like, that, that divot at Market Street in Centennial, like someone's going to lose an axle.
Yeah.
In it there. I don't know if there's water seeping underneath, but even that is getting bad.
Yeah, that's something they're getting ready to start right away.
Okay.
I know that was part of the deal.
They've paid the price over there, they waited a long time with that wrecked road, so.
And the sidewalks, the sidewalks are being done there, no?
Over on Rock Hill, I don't, I don't know about Market.
Market, the Market sidewalk on that side of the, the parking lot.
Yeah, I don't recall, off the top of my head, but I want to make it up.
Okay. All right, so with that, motion to approve the parking rules and regulations for 1517 Mark, Market Street parking lot.
Second.
Dennis, yes.
Any further discussion?
No, Dennis. Dennis, yes?
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Seth, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
All right, great.
Excuse me. I got a note from Citizen as we were talking, the blue wall at the Booth Playground is a soccer kickback.
Okay.
We're practicing soccer.
So it'd be great to have some Foxborough sports themed mural stuff up there, you know?
Soccer balls, footballs, tennis rackets.
That's right.
Yeah. Although some of those are incorporated, I don't want to. All right, so now we have two action items. So motion to accept a donation for the Boyd and Library from the Foxborough Cable Access for 2024 JFK Museum membership passes in the amount of $250.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Seth, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Motion to approve select board meeting minutes from April 9th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Seth, yes.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't, I wasn't there, so I'm abstaining.
Okay. All right, so next we have an executive session, we did it on the back because Doc was late. We're going to move into executive session, then we are due to come back into open session and then adjourn in open session as well. So our plan, I, how long do we plan on being executive session, do we have any idea?
I hope it's like, how long are you guys going to take?
We hope, we hope, we hope it's gonna be quick, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, no guarantees. So with that, motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding the contract for Fire Chief Michael Kelleher. And then we also have some meeting minutes to approve as well. So with that motion to enter into executive session?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Seth, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
All right, great. So any of our members of the public will just have to ask you to step outside during the executive session, you're welcome to hang around and come back in when we're done, hopefully very briefly, otherwise, if you run home fast enough, you can probably catch it online. Your choice. Thank you.